It is 9:09. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you will rise for the invocation and the pledges, please.
Dear God, we thank you for today. We thank you for the blessings you've given each of us. We thank you for the calling that you have put in our hearts to serve and not only us at this Commissioners' Court, but all of the servants that you have throughout this courthouse and throughout our community. Guide us today and the days to come as we continue to work hard on this budget. We know times are tough, but we know that discernment is important as we balance out the needs of the community and also the ask that we give of each taxpayer. Guide us through this process that we could be respectful and mindful of all opinions that are brought today and that we will work hard to find the best solution possible. Pray for your guidance for the men and women who protect our community and for all of our staff and our families. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I almost forgot, we lived in Texas.
[laughter] I'm ready to sit down.
I didn't put in the minutes.
Don't ever forget that, John.
It is Thursday, August 17th, at 9:11, and we have four Commissioners in the courtroom present. Commissioner Gonzalez, oh, he's here. I was just fixing to say he will be in here shortly. So we have, everyone is present. I will move on to item D if there are any announcements on disclosure of conflicts of interest. There being none, we will move on. You can always disclose if something comes up and you remember. A public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Thank you, Ade. Mr. Ortiz, you're up. If you will state your name and address, and you realize we can't talk back to you, and there is a three-minute limit for...
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I'm here to speak in behalf of the employees' courthouse. As you all know, I was National Civil Rights Director for the American GI Forum for 10 years, and my job was to defend people that couldn't defend themselves. One of my objections or objects was to support employees, get them back to work where they were unjustly dismissed. And I had a pretty good success rate. I had about 90% success rate. But my purpose here is to, I know that you're trying to balance the budget, and I understand that there's a shortfall, but please do not touch the employees. Remember that for every employee, you've got four or five other family members that you're going to affect, and that's hard. It's hard for even one family to suffer because of unemployment. So please, I'm asking you right now to keep it in your heart not to affect the employees of Nueces County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on public comment who didn't sign up? There being none, we will move on to our regular agenda. Item 1, discuss and consider adopting an order pursuant to Section 251.013 of the Texas Transportation Code, changing the name of a portion of County Road 22 to London Family Road and related matters. Commissioner Chesney, this is your item.
Sorry, Judge, I was being bullied over here by Commissioner Gonzalez. No, I'm kidding. Yes, Judge, today we are discussing, and I'm sorry, are we on the, just on the public hearing?
Just on the changing of the name after the notice?
Of the name, at this point, right.
And we had the 10 days notice that we had to wait. That was yesterday, the 16th.
Right. And so I think today we're doing two things. We'll be approving the renaming. If there's no one here in regards to the public hearing part of that, we would be approving the renaming of that portion of County Road 22 that has been identified in the record as the London Family, or London Family Road. So I don't really have any other discussion on that. If there's no one here to discuss it, it has been posted appropriately and done according to the law, and therefore would make the motion to rename that part of County Road 22 as London Family Road.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes unanimously. And item 2, discuss and consider adopting a resolution pursuant to Section 43.1055 of Texas Local Government Code to formally request the City of Corpus Christi to annex a portion of County Road 22. Commissioner Chesney?
Judge, again, this is a request by the City of Corpus Christi, and this was one that was in the hopper before we put in place our moratorium on future County Road annexations until we have some more determination. This one was already in, had already been filed, and out of courtesy, we're just going to go ahead and complete this one. So Judge, I would make the motion that we accept the petition and allow the City of Corpus Christi to annex this portion of County Road 22, and would ask that our Public Works Director be directed to make the contact with the city to let them know that that has been done in a final vote, and leave it to them then as to what needs to happen and work with the county attorneys.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes unanimously. Item number 3, discuss and consider rejecting all bids for employee benefits, management, and consulting services. That was RFP number 3244-23. Michael Robinson, you're here. Do you want to...
Judge, I'd make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Did you say aye, Commissioner Haneda? Sorry, Kara didn't hear you. Yes.
And then Judge, I think, do we need to make a motion to redirect Mr. Robinson to send that out again? Is that the right also? Do we need to do that, Mr. Robinson, today?
I think that's later.
Yes. Today, if y'all would go ahead and make a motion for me to be authorized to publish the bid again.
I'd make that motion.
This only says, "Consider rejecting."
It's a normal...
It's a related matter.
It's okay.
Yeah, it's a normal process. Whenever we have to reject all bids, y'all have the option of just leaving it there or having me go out and redo the process again, so.
So, we're going to do the reprocess?
Yes.
And I thought there was a conflict about the timeframe trying to get this done.
With discussion. Yeah, I've got discussion on this a little bit. Whenever, I think there was a second, so whenever. And John, you may have had some too. I'll defer.
Yeah, no, I was just going to ask if maybe we can get this discussed, if we can defer to the Insurance Committee to work on this with Michael. I know I've had discussions with him. One was the timing, and I think that this will get us better aligned so that we don't reappoint a consultant on years that we go out for a bid.
Correct.
It just complicates the process. So this is one of them. I think that we did good by approving that. But also just some tweaks and questions. I have the bid itself. It was a good example, but maybe not what I was hoping to attract to our bid process. It actually eliminates sole proprietors, and there's a whole lot of issues that I have questions on that. But if we could defer to the Insurance Committee, Court, to work out those minor details with Michael, and of course, will it still need to come back then?
Once you give me this permission to go out again, and the committee approves the bid documents, I'll be able to publish without having to come back to court. And the next time I would come to court would begin to have y'all discuss the results.
Yeah, I think the only thing that really needed to be, well, that I know, needed to be worked out, maybe do you have something else, John? I don't know, was that scoring matrix. That was a problem because it really eliminated pretty much five out of seven in the way it was set up. So I don't know how we, you know, we fix that because we've just got to fix it to where, because on the scoring, I'm scoring, price is something you can negotiate. So to have a matrix that pretty much eliminates five out of seven of those, I didn't even start on the books because once I saw the scoring sheets, I was like, okay.
And that was one of my concerns. So I think, like Michael said, if we could just allow the committee to make minor adjustments and then put it out on the street for bid.
Sure. Let's just get it out because I know we're, obviously, we want to, because that one's coming up when?
It's coming up September 30, so I wanted to remind the Court, too, that you have a personal services contract currently with the current provider, and you're going to want to visit that with County Attorney's Office. I believe that was done under Judge Neal originally. It was a personal service contract that was approved by court and worked out directly between, I guess, Judge Neal and the county attorney.
Well, the court approved it. I mean, I guess, I think it was done before I was here. So, but then we've reapproved it in the past, so.
Yes.
I guess my question is, can we get all this done back and redone before it expires so that we can, right, do another one? Because we don't want to have to...
Right.
Because what John's trying to avoid is just re-upping without having alternatives, right? So I just want to make sure on timing. And I would think it wouldn't take much to get this one back out because there are minor tweaks, and I would hope that those seven would reapply with...
Right. I don't believe we'll have a long time between now and then, but we will cross the September 30 before you can finish the process.
So then we have to extend that for 30 days? Can we, I guess we could extend the current provider for 30 days if that's the problem?
Can we just push it as fast as we can, and if we need to, then bring it up. Last meeting in September, just to maybe re-up for one month.
And make sure that he is willing to do that as well.
Yes.
Okay, so, tell me why you think it for sure goes past September 30th? Because of how you have to publish and everything?
Right. Just the normal bid process is usually 16 to 90 days between the time I advertise the bid until we contract with the person.
So there's no way, John, we're going to be able to, if it's 60 to 90 days, we're already middle of August. So I think we, can we, I mean, I would think this is related. I mean, we ought to be able to give direction to ask the current provider to extend while we're doing this. I mean, he's one of the new bidders. I would think he would be happy to do that. So can we, can we give that direction today too? Francisco, is that close enough? I mean, is that enough? Or do we need to put it on for the 23rd? I don't care either way. We're meeting again. We're going to be meeting for the rest of it.
We might need to put that on for the 23rd. I would need to look at the contract that the current provider has right now, and we haven't looked at that yet.
We have plenty of time to get it on another meeting if you just want to move forward with going back out that motion. We have a motion in a second.
I still want to leave us hanging, that's all.
And then you can talk to him as well before we vote on something that...
Message is received. We'll start.
So we have a motion and a second to send these back out with changes. Are there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Michael. We're going to go to item number 3, executive session. Public notices given that Commissioners' Court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. To the extent there's been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and for those executive session, the public is advised that the Court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda item in executive session when authorized by law to do so. In the event the Commissioners' Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Act authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer. In accordance with the authority of the Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.073, 551.074, 551.0745, 551.076, 551.086, 551.087, the Commissioners' Court will hold an executive session to consult with the attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberating regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices and/or economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioners' Court may, in an open session, take such appropriate action on items discussed in an executive session. Item A for executive today is consult with county attorney on legal issues related to the transfer of leadership at the Nueces County Medical Examiner's Office and related matters, Texas Government Code 551.071. It is 9:24, and we are going into executive session. 55, and we're coming back to open session. And I will go to item number 5, the Budget Workshop, and everyone received yet new numbers and new paperwork, and I think we're all at a little bit of a conundrum to try to see. I don't know if you want to go through some of it, Dale. I'm not sure how much we can really discuss on it. If you want to clarify why some of the changes were made for today.
Yes, Your Honor, we went through several departments, and we, our main concentration will be on Tab K, L, M, and N, showing you where our estimated balances might be if we do the no new revenue tax or if we do the voter-approved tax. M is your possible new positions or frozen positions or deleted positions, and is reclassifications. So through, and also L, we're going to look at L, and you will see what the requests were, what the proposed cuts that I made originally, and then what the departments made. You'll see that on L. So if we go to Tab K first, you will see on Tab K1 where we did last time, it's still, this is the no new revenue tax number, so we have now, the total difference is a reduction of a budget of $18,227,725 in budget numbers. If we go through this and we do the no new revenue tax numbers, we would receive, if we go to what we consider estimating-wise, a $5 million shortfall for this. Now, if we go to Case 4 and 5, which is the voter-approved tax rate, which not means we're going to adopt it yet, we're just discussing this now. We go to Case 5, you see that, again, now the balance for the budget is at $13,235,896, and you do have the cuts in it we will be talking about in just a minute.
Negative. Just so you clarify that, it's a negative 13.
Yes, negative 13, negative 13 million, yes. If we do the estimates on, if we do the voter-approved, we'll be so short, $236,671. But with the reviewing, the other cuts we receive from Public Works, from Coastal Parks, from Inland Parks, from the fairgrounds, we can probably reduce transfers from the general fund to cover that, and we know some of our interest rate income will cover that. So I believe we will be where we need to be.
Hey, Dale, excuse me. You know, I really don't want to, I think, to me, if we're going backward, there's monies in other areas we need to touch before we touch any department. You know, I don't think we should take away anything from any departments that are struggling, they're barely making it. You know, there's a whole list of areas of money that we can touch before we even start touching the departments, you know, and I don't think we should take away, this is my opinion, I don't think we should take away anything from any departments until we actually take away where the money is there before we even go beyond that. So this is my opinion.
Wait, say that again.
You know, I think there's a pot of monies other places that we can take.
Like what, like what's that?
Well, we can use it for whatever to reduce, right? I mean, I'm not going to take the department, cut back on departments because why cut back on departments if you have money somewhere else?
But where, though? I don't understand what you're saying. Like where would be a...
Well, you got the 1115 waiver, you got the opiate, you got the...
And certain of your microphones, please, guys.
You got the opiates, you got the, you got the capital credits, you got also the RTA, you got the general capital, and, you know, and then we also, you know, you mind, I kept saying it, but you guys don't want to, you know, we have the, our fund balance, you know, we always shoot for 25. We're at 28.
25%.
25%. We're at 28. So, you know, based on that, if we even use $3 million from there, we're not, it's not like we're going to lose anything. You know, we've done that before, you know, where we have used our fund balance to balance our budget. So, you know, and Dale was talking about the 13, and the shortfall is 236. Well, last year we had $10 million, the shortfall was 235.
No, that was in the positive. We ended up in the positive.
Well, I know, but we had a negative, too.
No, no, it was, the budget was negative, and then the actual, we put $2 million in our reserves.
That's what I'm saying, but I know, but we worked it out because, you know, we finally came back and we worked it out and said, where's the monies coming from? We always have to work it out, right? But it always seems, it always seems to say that our expenses seem to be almost, for some reason, we do this, that they're always almost two times bigger than our revenues, you know, and this is why there's, we find monies down the road, you know, the following year because expenses weren't that much, you know, and I think that we, we're looking at expenses that are not actual expenses, I mean, to me. So I just, this is just me. I don't think we need to, you know, right now to look at even taking away from anybody else other than where the monies are at right now. You got the $5 million 1115 waiver, I mean, take $3 million. You don't have to take the whole amount, take $3 million. So, you know, I just, this is my concern, you know, this is what I'm, and my concern throughout the budget, that, you know, really don't want to touch, you know, some of these departments are really thin, you know, and, you know, they're going to be starting with people around to different areas because they can't do the job over here, they can't do the job over there, and now we're going to be short, we're going to be catch-up, you know, and I don't think in your area, Commissioner, you have a lot of things that we have in our area where we have all the senior centers, all the parks, you know. So this is where I'm, this is where I'm coming from, right? And we have probably a labor pool that is not, I don't know if it's as large as yours or not, but, you know...
A what pool, a what?
Labor pool, you know, or...
Oh, yeah, no, but Coastal Parks made their cuts. They suggested their cuts. They came back, what was their percentage on their cuts?
I think it was around 10, 15.
15, I think.
It was a significant amount. They made a significant suggestion for cuts. Inland Parks done theirs.
But they shouldn't have, you see, they shouldn't have to do that.
But I disagree. You know I love you, but that's just one of those areas I don't disagree, I totally disagree with you on this, Joe, because, Commissioner, because to take from, to take and put millions of dollars into this budget on a one-time thing means next year we are millions of dollars short again, and we're going to have to do this, and I'm not, I am not willing to support kicking the can down the road. I can't, I don't want to put everybody through this again next year.
Kicking the can for the last 10 years.
Nope, but not by taking money for one-time things. No, we haven't. We may have been kicking it in other ways. ARPA funding positions, things of those things I agree with, but to take money from 1115 waiver just because it's there and put it in this time, that means we're, that means whatever we do this year, we're short next year. If we put $3 million from 1115, we're $3 million short next year. If we take all those categories you listed, those are funds that if we put them into our budget, then we're going to be that many millions of dollars short next year because you have to make that money up, and there's no making it up if it's not coming from the general fund budget.
Those monies you don't have to make up, Commissioner. Those monies are extra monies. What do you...
No, you have to make it up in the budget because you're going to be short in the budget.
No. I mean, 1115 waiver, how are you going to be short?
Not in 1115 waiver, in the general fund. You're putting it into the general fund. You're proposing putting in the general fund. We're not going to be short in the waiver fund. No, I agree with that. I'm saying we're going to be short next year in the general fund, and we're going to end up with a budget deficit next year that if we do all this this year, we won't have a budget deficit next year. We will have tackled it, gotten it done this year, and moved on, and then next year it'll level off because our no-new tax rate will be different. And I may not be saying that exactly right, but if I'm...
Right. Based on valuation of the valuation of these two refires don't increase significantly, it won't be a significant change, correct?
There won't be this next year because, unless he goes from $2.5 billion to $7 billion again, and the presidential district screws it up again, which I'm hoping that they've learned their lesson on this, too.
Hope it did, hope it did.
What's a balance on coastal parks compared to inland parks or public?
Coastal parks' budget cuts are up on the screen for your review. This is what they submitted to our office. Every department used a different methodology, and so I had to work with the departments and, based on my conversations with them, based on what I was reading in other places that I could follow, I tried to apply. So the same director, I applied the same methodology going for all of their departments so that I could make some rhyme or reason to it.
Now, Commissioner, your question is, what's the difference right now? I believe our inland parks is a budget of 1.9 million, and as you saw there, the total budget for the coastal parks, where, because you have piers and RV parks, is there, I think, is at $3 million. So it's a little difference on that, but coastal parks brings in revenue to cover most of the cost where inland parks has done.
Come on, let's not get into that philosophical issue because there are a lot of departments that are not built to make money.
Correct, correct.
That's correct.
We're not getting there, John.
But why throw that out there? Why throw that out there? That's not fair.
I think it was just comparing that it's not apples to apples.
I get what you're saying. But it is fair, it's reality. I mean, it's not what we're, we're not trying to compare the two.
Government's not created to build to make revenue necessarily or to pay for itself.
That's correct.
I mean, that's the thing. So, I mean, you look at jails, I mean, are they making this money?
No.
I hope not. I hope we're not profiting off of people being in prison, but, I mean, so, come on.
Should be. We should be. We ought to charge them.
They cost us a lot. I agree. It's cost us a lot of money, but...
It's just a statement.
And I agree partially, and I don't mean to butt in, but while we're talking about what Commissioner Gonzalez brought up, I do agree with him to a certain extent. Now, to sort of the public and for some of staff to realize that these are numbers that were presented to us by court administration. So I would hope that our auditor's office has had time to look at that and that this is an actual discussion.
Wait, what, what are you talking about? Oh, what?
The numbers that Commissioner Gonzalez is mentioning about the 1115 waiver funds, and there's other funds.
No, Commissioner, we have not received that.
We have, we have not received that.
We have not received that.
Okay, so we need, we need you all to work on that.
I got, I got the email. Yeah, I just haven't seen it yet.
My thing is, is I agree, we do need to tighten our belts, so I do agree with that message, but I do agree that there are funds available. And I know it's kicking the can down the road, but my gosh, I'm about, let's put this fire out this year, and let's prepare to try to prevent another fire from happening next year. So I think it's a combination of both what Commissioner Gonzalez has said and Commissioner Chesney. There are ways and areas that we can make some cuts. Now, do we need to maybe ask for as much as what's been presented previously? Maybe that's what the issue is. Maybe we don't. And hopefully, and I won't support cutting live personnel. Now, are there vacancies that maybe we need to look at? I think that's fair game. But should we send a message to our employees that you may not know where you're at until sometime in September when we make the final vote? I would hope that we could at least know whether or not that's a reality because that is the buzz that's out there. I mean, I have people, friends, who usually talk to me about politics, or we're getting ready for fantasy football right now, and their big questions to me are, what's going on with the budget? I mean, this issue is facing and impacting everyone. Everyone knows about it. It's on their tongue. That's the first thing. So we got to make sure that these numbers, that now that you have them, that you have a chance to chew them over. There's a lot that you gave us, which I appreciate the updates. Section Q alone is like over 100 pages. Is that right?
Yeah, that's every, that's the detail of everybody's...
And nothing changed on that?
No, it did. That's everything changed on it, yes.
That's what I'm saying. So we're getting a lot of this that I think maybe concepts we should talk about today, like the philosophy that Commissioner Gonzalez is saying, the philosophy that Commissioner Chesney is saying, and then all of us weigh in, and then maybe if the department heads that are here today, we have a few that maybe want to give their share of what their thoughts are for the department, or give us time to digest it by Monday, because like the judge said, we're going to recess within the next probably hour and a half or so, or hour, actually, less than an hour probably. So I just want to make sure we get the most of our time now, and if we need to reconvene in the afternoon after that recess, then let's do so. But this is a lot to take in, but the information I got from court administration, it's appealing to me. It shows that there's actual money that we could utilize from different pools to help finance some of the budget. Now, will we have it available next year? Well, if we use it all, definitely not. But if we use some of it to shrink that gap a little and then make up some gaps for vacancies that are probably never, ever really filled, then I think that's hopefully some real savings that we can have. So that's my concern with all of this, is that, you know, if we have department heads, I'd love to hear from them, but if not, this is enough for us to keep busy between now and work with you all between now and to Monday when we have our meeting, and anticipate that's when we really should be ready to move forward on some recommendations. Ade, I hope that you get with Dale and Lisa on this, to share what your numbers are, that y'all take into consideration what she's sharing, and then for someone to tell us yes or no, this can be used. But this information come at the last minute, we shouldn't be talking at, you know, 20 million deficit or wherever the new deficit is now that's been projected. So I just... So I, I just, I think we need to, we're all worried, we're all concerned, but, you know, let's face it, these, these mics are on, the cameras are on, people all over are watching what's going on, and, and they're, they're, they're honing in on, on what we're saying, what we're doing, and, and there's, there's staff that is worried. They're worried about, will they have a job, what kind of, what new order of business will be done come October one, after this budget is processed? So, can, you know, can y'all get together on this? Ida, share them with that information, where you, how you came up, your methodology, how you came up with these, these, finding these funds. And then y'all tell us, yes, can some of that be incorporated in? And then give us another number, another look at what a deficit would be after processing those numbers as well. Because it, this is a whole lot to take in, you know, all within the last twelve hours or, or less.
Point, John, that's a great point, and I would agree, and, and one of the things too, for example, coastal parks did, was they gave you, I think, another option that had no personnel cuts whatsoever. They came up with options that had some additional cuts in there too, is what I was told by the, by the coastal parks directors. There was two options that were presented, and, and so those are the kind of things that we're looking for. We're, you know, that's what I want to see from the departments is, where can we cut that doesn't include personnel? That's the first order of business to look at.
Nobody here wants to cut personnel.
Right, we've all said that, we've all said the last thing we're going to look at is people, but vacancies has to be factored in. That's a more realistic thing, is to look at all these vacancies that we have, and I get that it's not dollar for dollar, but it still does matter. I mean, if we can eliminate a lot of these unfilled positions, that's, that's potential millions of dollars that come out of our budget. It, I get it, there's an effect on the backend on that too, but that's a heck of a lot better than, 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 than cutting people. So I'm with John on the theory, I don't think there's much to do today, because we got sixty pages of stuff from the auditor, and I got an email yesterday late that I haven't had a chance to look at from the court manager, and, and I want department heads who are here, want to be able to talk, but I, I think we need to be able to digest all this, reset this for a long meeting on Monday, and come back and start hammering it out, because there is no way I can read these sixty pages that got handed to me five minutes before I walked in the door. So I think that's what you were going with, John, was, let's let the department heads talk, let's, let's all go digest this, because what the court manager's provided, which I would have loved to have had three months ago, I'm glad we got it now, but, I mean, let's go back and look at it.
I've got a question, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, you're, I'm good, I'm just ready.
I just want to ask, will the county be making any kind of new revenue, like when tax season comes around?
No.
No?
No.
No, because of the refinery issue.
We still don't know the total number of the refineries, but.
I understand, but, but we know that they're in the billions of valuation, and we know that they're not going to pay, they're billions.
I mean, that could, that could change, that, that could be a.
If it changes, then yes, we would be in the positive. If, if that were to change during the budget year, then yes, we would be generating revenue.
That won't be the first year that's going to happen with the refineries.
Yes, sir.
They've been fighting for six years.
They, they've been fighting for six years, but this is the first year that they've gone up two hundred and fifty percent in their valuation.
Well, I'd like to get a true number, you know, if that's what it is, you know, but, uh, I just think as much taxes has gone up, you know.
Taxes actually, if you look at this page on what Ida provided, have gone down. I mean, if you, it does, they're not numbered, and we just got this, so I want to say to both of you, these numbers, I understand with the abatements, with everything, the numbers have changed, with the refineries deciding what they're going to pay, the numbers have changed, so I know it's been difficult on y'all, but it's hard for us when every day we get another number, a new thing. And Ida, on you, this stuff, this is great information, but it should have been provided a month ago, at the very least. This is great work, but I'm, I'm disappointed that it wasn't given to us before now.
No, Judge, it, this info just like to help today to make decisions. A month ago, we were just open the air, and we didn't even, we were talking twenty million, then we talked.
But I don't think anything on this thing changed, it gave us where we are in our balances. It's not on, it had nothing to do with the refineries, that's what both of y'all. We have to make decisions that are going to impact lives. We have to make decisions that are going to move the county forward and stabilize, make sure that next year we are able to survive. We can only move forward with the information we are given, and this kind of information coming at the midnight hour before we are asked to talk about it, vote about it, anything, is not productive.
Well, that's the same thing the auditor does, too.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking to the both, I'm talking to both of them. So I'm, I'm disappointed, I, I, you know, I know the situation we're all under, both sides, so I am not. But guys, we got to do better than this. We, we're, we, I, I am for cutting the budget so we don't have this next year. I am for any kind of cuts that we can do, so we are not faced with this, this kind of decision again. But that's going to mean making hard decisions, and we can only make those decisions if we have accurate information. I am also, my opinion has always been, if we want to take care of our Nuasis County employees, then we've got to get down to Nuasis County business, and constitutionally what we are required to do. We have many employees that have argued that they are not paid enough for a long time. Well, maybe if we got out of some of the other business we're not supposed to be in, we would be able to pay our employees more. I am not saying that's going to happen in this time, I'm not saying that's even a thought that we can go forward. I am saying we should have had this kind of information before now, so that's my two cents.
I would thank Judge, excuse me, if, uh, we rely more on the auditors to give us that kind of information. Uh, so I would think that what Ida did is good, but I, also, I think the auditors have the same access information that Ida has, no?
But I would like the two of them to sit down in a room, and let's see how accurate both sides are, and let's come forward with a unified position at the next Monday meeting, yes.
I agree.
Now, Your Honor, I would like to go a, a few items, because y'all did request the departments to do some cuts, and a lot, most of the departments did step forward, if you look at tab L.
Teresa has a comment real quick, too, is it about this before we move on?
Yeah, I just wanted to state that the changes for the auditor's numbers are because the cuts are now in, so it changes the numbers. It, it reduces the deficit.
That's a good, that is a good point.
All those numbers are included now, so.
These numbers, right, that's a very good point, Teresa, and I, and I, that's a good point. I'm glad you said that, because I'm not happy with the fluctuation in the numbers, but there are reasons for them too, and we did just ask these cuts to be made, so that's a fair response. So, but, but I still would, would like to be able to, you know, gotten what we got, you know, because part of the reason we, we put the court manager in that position was because of her, her number expertise, so I would have liked to have gotten that before, but these numbers have got to solidify. So if, so that's my question is, before we move on, is, have we gotten all the recommendations from departments yet? Because, and, and meaning, you know, have they submitted their suggested cuts? And if not, then we have to plug more numbers in, which are going to change this again. And what we said was, on Monday, if we don't get something from the departments that we sent to them last week, then we're going to have to make some suggestions to the auditors right now, which means we need to, need to do that, so that we can have more numbers, which means the numbers are going to change again on Monday, depending on what we put in. So that's the question, is which departments haven't submitted, and I'm not, I don't need you to shame them, I'm just saying.
I do, well, okay. They, no, I'm sorry, they, they have all gotten the message, and I'm not trying to be the bad guy, I mean.
That's okay, I do that well.
That's what I'm saying, you do it so well.
I know, but please feel free.
Look, we don't need the names, but they know who they are. But we, if you want to provide us a list, Dale, or Ida, or both of you, if you have it, provide that to us offline, so that we know. Um, that's great, I, I mean, I don't want to publicly embarrass anyone, but, I mean, I would think that we would have everyone here today. Either they're, they're good with what they presented, or they're saying, we trust a new court to handle anything for our department, or our office that we were elected to, and, and that's it. But I would figure we'd have a full house, and you looked out in the audience, we do not have all departments and elected officials represented here, so maybe some are online. I know, I know the sheriff is always good about being here online, but.
So how many, how many departments did not?
But that's my concern too, and I, and I agree, and just also to throw out, as we ask, or Judge, if I might clarify, um, when you said, you know, to get, make sure court administration and auditors are together, and, and I know that Teresa is a watchful eye as well, so I don't know if that extra sets of, set of eyes also should be part of the discussion, or at least there, just to help kind of take notes and help pull it all together for us, that's just a suggestion, I don't know.
And I think we have another meeting set up for Friday, tomorrow at eleven, so we will sit down more with this.
So how many departments slash elected officials have not submitted cuts? How many? Just that, assess that, how many?
About twenty.
Twenty haven't?
Haven't.
And how many have?
Uh, we have a hundred departments in the, in, in the general fund, eighty.
So eighty have, twenty haven't?
Roughly, yes.
Okay, well then, what, what do we need to, what do we need to tell?
The twenty?
No, what do we need to tell Dale? Because he just needs, he's going to have to go plug a number in. Because, to be fair, we can't, we, we have, we can't let that twenty off the hook, because they don't like it. None of us like it, this sucks, right? This whole process, not, it's terrible, it's horrible, but I don't know what else to do. I mean, I don't know what else to do, I can't help that the Presole District put us in the spot, I can't help that the refineries are protesting. I can't, that's nothing anybody did, it's just the situation we're in. And if the twenty departments don't want to be a part of this, well, okay, then don't, then, then don't come asking for stuff later. If you don't want to be a partner and help us, you don't get to be a partner in good times and not a partner in bad times. So maybe what we ought to do is the twenty that didn't, we make them even cut more than the eighty that did, because this is ridiculous. I mean, I don't understand it, I don't, I don't get it. This is a terrible time for all of us, and all anybody else wants to do is just cry. And the twenty that didn't do it, shame on you, double shame on you. So, yeah, I'll be the bad guy, I don't care, this, this stinks for all of us. We've all spent hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours in this, whether we agree or not. Joe Gonzalez spends, spends a ton of time on this. I don't agree with everything he says, he doesn't agree with everything I say, but we're still working hard to do it. But where are those twenty departments? What do we have to do, other than put a list out to everybody in the, in the county that says, here are the twenty departments that won't help us? I don't know what else to do, twenty department heads or elected officials. And if they're department heads, they work for us, they're department heads and they're not doing it, then that's a huge problem, and we need to bring them up for review. I can't make an elected official do it, because they're an elected official. But if their department head's not doing it, then they need to be put up, we need to put them on the agenda as soon as possible, bring them up here, and make them do it in front of everybody, and, and explain to us as a department head why they're not doing it. So how many of them are department heads, and how many of them are elected officials? Hold on, I want to answer, just give me a question, that's all.
Be, uh, real quick, a lot of them wanted to submit our elected officials.
Okay, how many are department heads?
Um, I would say five or ten, maybe.
Five or ten are department heads?
Yeah.
Out of twenty?
Yeah, maybe.
That's, that, that we can control, I mean, you know, so that, we, we can control, and we can make sure, put that on the agenda, that those department heads aren't doing their job. They work for this commissioner's court, and if they're not doing their job, that needs to be put on the, put on the record, written up, and put it in their permanent records, because this is not easy on anybody. So I, I don't know what else to do about it. Elected officials, if they're not doing it, shame on them.
Ten percent across the board, for now.
Well, whatever, I mean, I don't know what it ought to be, no, what, what we told, what we told, we told statutory constitution.
Some are those under different departments as well, or those independent department heads, because there are multiple departments under one person.
That's great.
Yes, so.
But like Edward put all his in, and he's got several departments, so, I mean, he got his all in, so, I mean, there's no, there's still no excuse.
We just need, I'll get with y'all, and we'll contact those departments that haven't, too.
Because if you look at a tab L, you'll see the, the, one, two, three, four, five, six column from the bottom up, or the third column, fourth column down from the, from the top, you'll see that's where the department changes are, these are summary changes. If you want to see the actual event, what they actually changed here, the, the Q number, when you got all those Qs showing what they all is, these are summaries of what they put in, what they requested are, are done. So these are the, so department change to requests, what they put in, so, uh, if you go to the general fund, which is the last page of that report, uh, which is L six, you see that the department put in almost three million dollars worth of changes, or reductions.
Who, who did?
All, all, all the ones that submitted requests, it totaled right, almost three million. It was two million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars total, if you look at L six, which is your total.
And thank you to those departments for doing that, thank you to those elected officials who did that, thank you for taking this seriously. Appreciate it very much.
Now, also in that situation, if you look at a tab M, and, and you'll see where some of the departments are, this is where you're, you're talking about vacancies and some other stuff, uh, some of these, and this is what's, to put in some, some items where consideration for this, and I went through most of these items, and most of these are vacancies. Uh, we know that we need, we need to bring in the, the medical examiner from ARPA fund over here, but we'll change some other, with, with y'all's discussion, what you had about how we handle the Emmys office, they'll, they'll change a little bit. Uh, there's possibly eighteen positions, they're, they're asking to be not eliminated, but frozen, which means they, these will be frozen for an entire year. I know this would be another, another situation, well, maybe next year we have to do the same thing, but they're asked, say, each of them have frozen, and, and that includes the county clerk, the collection division, my office, purchasing, district clerk, the constable, the juvenile probation, social services are all saying, these are positions I'm willing to freeze for an entire year to help the county. Now, those below that is actually those, those positions are, are being requested to be deleted, and these are also, these are vacancies that we have in the offices.
You don't have any of ours on here, like the government relations from court management or any of that.
Government relations are eleven twenty, very, very top, as deleted.
Oh, okay.
And then we need, and I think we ought to, you know, go ahead and for sure put in the, the frozen position that we have in court man, in the court, whatever, courted admin.
That's, that's what they're doing, where it's being deleted.
It's the first one.
First one deleted.
Okay, and then also the farm marshal, that's one that we should be in, there's that in there?
The whole, the whole department was wiped out.
I don't have that farm marshal under yet, but that'll be a deleted position, correct. And that's, this is what the department's saying, I'm, I'm willing to do this for the, for the, for the court. I, I know the courts, they commit the budgets in, in tough spot. These positions may be something they, they need, but they want to have frozen, and be frozen for as long as the, the, the court believes is necessary. Could be one year, could be two years, that, that's up to the court. But there are, right now, twenty-one, well, if you add the farm marshal, be twenty-two, a position that can be deleted, and these are all vacancies, and that, right now, if you delete all these positions, it's one point six million dollars. We delete that. No, no, which ones aren't vacancies?
The, the ones that have steps, you know, you know aren't vacancies. That means that there's an employee there, if there's a step.
Well, some of them are retiring, and they're going, they're going, they're going to delete them when they retire. But some of the, some of that position, and some of them, when, these were the department's submissions that they won't want to delete, so, uh, right now, that's what their position is on, on those.
And Dale, have we talked about, I know we haven't gotten to a consensus, but I think we, I mean, I, I, as part of, and I kind of look at our cuts as collective, right? Because we have commissioner's court admin, we have farm marshal, we have, Judge has emergency management. So we, we've continued to make those as part of our collective situation. One of the things that I think we ought to look at, and we, we, we haven't gotten there yet, we didn't give you direction on, was all of those dues and everything that we're not mandated, I think, because any, all the outside agency stuff, all that stuff I think has to go away, because that saves people. Because if you look at those numbers, that's another three, four hundred thousand, and I get it, I don't, I, I mean, some of those dues, I mean, I hate to do that. I mean, that means we can't be a member of TAC, or we can't be a member, but you know what? If we can save a person by, by cutting off dues, then that's what we got to do. And I think that's, that, that ought to be, you know, put in for consideration and consideration, not voting on, because we're not voting today, but that ought to be put on the list, and, and whether we vote for it or not, that's yet to be determined, but I think we have to put every number we can, that are not people, on this list, and those, I don't think, and again, I, I'm just getting this, right, I haven't seen it, I haven't digested, but if that isn't in here, I think at least it needs to be in here, and then we can vote up or down on it, right? I mean, everything that, that these, that the budget, or that the department and elected officials are putting in, that's going to be on the list. Whether it gets done or not, we don't know, but that's going to be on the list, but I think we, I think you have to put in here for Monday's numbers, unless everybody says, you know, unless three people say no up here, we got to put in all those dues, all those subscriptions, all the outside agency money, everything, and then we can vote it up or down later, but that has to come in there, because that was what, three, four hundred thousand on that? That, that's, that's, that's eight people we can save. I mean, if we can save people by cutting dues, then I'm sorry, we're not going to fund the Regional Economic Development Corporation, or Robstown this year, or whoever, because I want to save people. That's every dollar we save, it's not people saves people, so I think that needs to be put on the list. And I don't think that's on here, unless I didn't see it.
Right now, that's what the list that Teresa, Teresa provided, was the list of your dues, and the list of the other agencies that we have, I'll work with Teresa on that, and we'll, we'll put that as a budget challenges, and we can see what we want to take away or not.
And I want to say, add on to that, is that, you know, like the positions, like, like the roof, right? I mean, that's a big issue, and I asked you all, you know, let's, let's get rid of that commitment that I had previously made for the medical examiner. Uh, I mean, that's all included, so that should be, not only, I think, part of what we're, we're trying to save collectively up here as a. So that should be, not only, I think, part of what we're, we're trying to save collectively up here as a, as a commissioner's court, but that, that it is saving the bottom line and that we can eliminate dues. I agree, I think that's the perfect message. If we can eliminate dues and it saves one position, that was well worth it. Um, you know, I'm still gonna wanna look at, obviously, being a member of TAC, I mean, they provide us a lot of helpful information, but.
I will argue on that one too.
I'll, I'll put in whatever outside funds that I have, that don't go towards this general budget that I have in balance to cover some of that. So if we feel like we need to, then let's do it, right? I, hopefully I won't be the only one, but if I have to, then I will. But, um, I think that, that, that's the kind of spirit and approach that we need to this, is that every, every single dollar that we can save, let's make it happen so that, that, that there will not be anyone cut, that there will not anyone having, having to be worried about their position being cut, right? Let's, let's do all the vacancies that we can. But, but I totally agree. I mean, let's, let's look at all those extras that we, we can make other arrangements to cover or just not do it for a year. And, and let's add that up, um, as well.
And I think we should do it as a separate list because I think it's important that the department heads, uh, every employee sees what we as a collective body are doing with the, with the, with the departments that report to us that we can have control over, so that they see the amount of money that we're cutting out of our collective budget. So that they know that it's gonna, we're, what, we're. It's, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a, I'm not gonna say it out loud, cause it's gonna be a big percentage. We're gonna cut more from our collective budgets than, than probably anybody percentage wise is, because that's what we should do. That's how we should lead and, and, and we should lead by example, which is, look, we're doing it too and it's gonna stink for us too. And we're gonna all have to do more work and that's okay. But I'd like to see that on Monday. And I wanna make sure it's everything, all the stuff we've done, the farm marshal, you know, the judge, the emergency management, the, the court, assistant court, uh, whatever that position's called, sorry, I'm rattling off. But all those things that we've already done and how that's going to be a collective cut, that's gonna be a large number. And so we're not asking everybody else to do it and not, and not sacrificing ourselves. And that's what we have to do.
We also went to Commissioner Gonzalez and I went to the hospital district meeting yesterday. And they're, um, possibly talking about cutting, what, one and a half, almost two million from our budget that they fund as well.
Well, uh, agents, outside agencies.
Outside agencies and the top part, there were several things. It was about one and a half million that was the total. They normally give us about twelve, uh, cover things and it's gonna be about ten, eight.
So we may just have to hold on.
The jail diversion.
We have to hold on?
The jail diversion, yeah.
Cause we've got an RFQ on that, we just need to hold on that?
Yes.
Well, once we get to RFQ, if it's work, if it's good, then.
Just if we're talking about budget and things that we need to plan for, yes, that's another thing that came up yesterday.
And, and thank y'all, I know you, you were there, I guess, and Judge, and Commissioner Gonzalez. Thank y'all very much for doing that on, on our behalf, I appreciate that.
And, and, and some of them, they're still carrying over, like.
Yeah, a lot of them, they're still carrying over as like, there's, I mean, they're more than willing, but we also need to realize they were affected by this tax problem as, as we are as well. So I'm very pleased that they were willing to continue with as much as they're talking about now. It hasn't been voted upon or anything, but that was discussed at their meeting yesterday, yes. Any other discussion or direction? Or do we want to, um, bring this back for Monday after much guidance and suggestions, guys?
Judge, I just wanna interject that, uh, I hope the directors and elected officials understand that we're gonna try and work on once, uh, not, not on once, but on our needs.
Yeah, needs, yes, absolutely.
Please don't come in here and ask for something that we're gonna tell you no on, cause it's, it's not, it's not a need. You know, the roof is a need, we need that. The plumbing is a need, cause I can smell the, you know, the odor out in the hallway. So they need to understand that, especially if they haven't submitted any cuts.
Thank you. I absolutely agree. Any other discussion before we close and direct everyone to come back?
Did the, did the department heads that were here wanna say anything? Does anybody wanna?
Yes, sir, come on. Microphone, please.
Thank y'all. And, um, I did not mind working this exercise. I, I was happy to do it. I think for us, the other option that I provided to, uh, the budget dot com email and, and you, Judge, was if I zero out my entire capital outlay, I can still have the same effect and not cut the positions. It's risky, I know, but none of this doesn't have risk. I, all of this has risk, I mean. And so, so I just wanted to say that. Um, the other good thing going into this next fiscal year, now that we've gotten some issues cleared up with Padre Bay and, and the camping issue, all that, and, um, the market rate of which we do rentals at IB McGee is still reduced because we haven't brought the facility online. And so they're, they're not paying full price right now because they don't have that option, they have no showers, those facilities, stuff like that. End of month, those rates, those monthly rates and, and weekly rates are gonna go up too. So we've got some really good revenue producing opportunities going into this next fiscal year and, and, and into the calendar year. And the fact that most of my capital projects are tied up with grant monies, with no match, we can still keep moving forward. So I just wanna let y'all know that. And, um, I did tell Elisa, whatever's in one eighty-two, that's tied to Bob Hall Pier, it's only nineteen grand in it. I said, zero it out, we don't have a pier right now. I said, it's not much, but why even have anything in there? Um, so anyhow, so, um, but yeah, I think we're doing good. You don't have to worry about us. So thank you.
We appreciate it. Edward, you wanna speak? Come on up.
So Judge, Commissioners, I've been talking to you for the last couple of days. So essentially, you gotta look at community services as one group. Yeah, we're a bunch of budgets, but everything works together with each other. Parks works with our community services, which works with our Parker Pool, which works with our, uh, fairgrounds operations. So all of our operations and buildings are all interconnected. So we're looking at three point six million in, that's what you give to the county, uh, the rural areas. And, uh, we're looking at cutting six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, which is about an eighteen thousand, which I, I failed to, I was telling Commissioner this morning, I failed to include Parker Pool in that. But they're, they're in that at twenty percent cut as well, so.
These are in there already turned in? These are in those book already, Lisa and Dale had those?
I just took all our budgets, put them together as one item.
I knew you talked about you were gonna be a little bit late, so I was wondering if these were part of the cuts that we were waiting on. They're included in this, okay.
And Parker Pool's in there too, cause I submitted that to Teresa, so that should be in there too.
So I, I sent them to them.
I didn't get it.
We didn't see that.
I'm sorry.
I gave it to Teresa. It's, it's twen, it's not a, it's a fifty-five thousand dollar budget. It's like nine thousand bucks, but it's in there. I mean, I sent it to Teresa and she'll get it to you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna adjust this, uh, this list so, to include that. And the, um, so our total budget cut is about eighteen percent. We tried as much as we can, but again, all our departments interactively work with each other. So if we're short in community services, you know, this budget also cuts out all the fluff. So if we're, we do a lot of emergency management stuff, we usually pay for the sand, we're not gonna pay for the sand. If equipment's down, we're gonna just.
If you're not gonna pay for the sand, emergency management, who's gonna pay for it?
Thing is, we gotta work that out. I mean, that's, that's one of those deals. And then, the other thing that was interesting in this budget is.
Situations, that's something that maybe, which, yeah.
You know, but, but it's things like that, that we, as a department, the, the county has a bad, not bad, but it's the practice that whatever department's requesting the items pays for the items if we don't get reimbursed for the items. So I'm not gonna tell Driscoll when we need to get him a pump, six inch pump, that, that we can't do it because we can't do it. We just do it. You know, whether we get reimbursement or not, that's a different story. But, uh, all our departments work synergistically, legally, together. We do our heating, cooling shelters, warming shelters, hurricanes, we're your people. In fact, we're working with D now on an exercise on the twenty-third, uh, moving the morgue trailer. So, uh, just for your consideration. The only other thing that we don't have in here is our, uh, fairgrounds budget, but that's a bigger animal that we need to chew on. I was working with Teresa on that and, uh.
We were working with our attorney as well, there's a contract there too, so there's some other issues with that one item, so yeah.
Just some comments.
Thank you.
Judge, I think we need to look at what, what, uh, public safety. If whatever, like Edward was talking, if that includes public safety, then, uh, we should try and work with them or with parks and whatever it's gonna take.
Parks works with public safety? I'm sorry, I, I missed.
No, what we do, what they do, taking a pump up there to Driscoll, okay? Might be considered public safety if the water isn't drained.
Oh.
The way it should be.
Okay.
You know, that's what I'm looking at. So I consider that as public safety.
Yes, and, and a flood you're talking about, if they need a pump in an emergency situation, yes, makes sense, yes. Any other department heads want, JJ, you wanna talk? And I know that, um, Mr. Kelly with the State Department had put in a request on your behalf as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, so yes, Judge and Commissioner, I just wanted to brief you on what's going on with my office and how busy we are, especially with all the new claims coming out. Uh, blue water contamination, I mean, Camp Lejeune contamination water, Blue Water Navy, PAC-TAC now, it has us extremely busy. Uh, in fact, we're doing about eighty claims a month and those claims take about forty-five minutes apiece. Uh, we have four hundred and forty-five walk-ins per month. That's just for services that we do. Uh, seventy phone calls per day. And it's myself and my assistant, that's it. Um, I would like to say that we have twenty-five thousand, five hundred veterans in Nuasis County. If you compare the staffing that we have here compared to, let's say, Hidalgo County, which has five hundred less veterans than we do in their county, they have ten people in their office. They have a VSO, four assistant VSOs, three secretaries, and a grant person. We have myself and Diana. Let's compare San Patricio County. San Patricio County has five thousand veterans in their county and they have three people in their office, a VSO, an assistant VSO, and an assistant. So I think we're running extremely lean. I did cut as much as I possibly could and even then, I think we're gonna struggle to keep up. But I just wanted to say that, you know, we're, we're doing as much as we can, cutting as much as we can. Uh, and let's not forget, we also manage and operate the Coastal Bend State Veteran Cemetery, which no other VSO office in the country does. So, and we're doing it with two people.
Well, no, hold on, hold on, you're not managing the Coastal Bend Cemetery with two people. There's a whole staff out there.
We, we have staff over there, but I'm talking about my office overseeing it.
I don't wanna scare the world here, that, I mean, there's, there's not just two people running.
We have twelve staff out there, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, but overseeing it itself.
I know your VSO's, yeah, lean, but we got a staff out there, so don't, don't pa, don't panic.
I understand, yes, sir.
And that's fully funded by the state of Texas.
That's correct, sir, yes.
So that's a different department. That's, that is not funded by Nuasis County.
Correct, sir.
Right.
I was gonna ask the same question, it was funded by the state of Texas.
Completely funded by the state, yes, sir, which those employees should not be affected.
And I think social services handles some things for y'all as well.
Yes, we work hand in hand with the Veterans Grant, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. We do have a grant person in our office, which handles the day-to-day bus passes, things of that nature. But we work with them to make sure that we, we do the casework. We have to do a lot of casework for the TVC grant. And it requires a lot more than just that half, was it twenty-nine hour, uh, per week person? So we do work in hand in hand to make sure that.
What does that grant provide, just for someone who's listening, who doesn't have a clue what that is?
Emergency financial assistance, Judge, uh, whether it be rent, utility, mortgage, uh, transportation, food. Uh, and then of course, we provide what we provide, bus passes, the pantry, hygiene products, things of that nature.
Right.
Excuse me, JJ, I just wanna, I just wanna clarify, you do help with mortgage payments?
Yes, sir.
For veterans?
For emergency financial assistance, yes, sir.
I hope veterans are listening to this.
Yes.
Cause I, I've had quite a few call me and ask if there was any assistance.
Yes, sir.
And also in, uh, some of them, people call me from Robstown, how do they get a house built? So that's another program, I guess, I don't know if it's over.
Send them our way, sir, we'll filter them, yes, sir, we'll help them out.
Thank you, JJ.
And I, I just wanted to say, uh, on top of that, we've, uh, we've actually brought in more than forty thousand dollars this year in donated funds for our office to make sure we take the burden off the court for our pantry, for our other services that we do. So again, this year alone, we've brought in more than forty thousand dollars in donated funds, HEB, all of the other people that have donated. So I just wanted to make sure we, we relayed that as well.
Is the food bank working with you in the pantry?
Somewhat, sir, somewhat.
What do you mean somewhat?
Yes and no. I'm just gonna say that, I don't wanna put them on blast, but.
Tell me yes or no, cause if it's no, I need to talk to somebody.
No.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
And that's all I wanted to mention, Judge and Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, JJ.
Any other, Rebecca, yes, ma'am?
Good morning. Well, the first thing I wanna say is I don't wanna make personnel cuts. I had two up there, two are vacancies and two are people who are in their positions. So I just wanna be very clear about that. And I did recommend, uh, y'all had talked about it in court the other day, freezing rather than cutting. So that is what I put on my notes, but I don't wanna lose any of them. And I would like to fill my positions because they've been vacant, uh, for a little while. The other thing I wanted to, uh, say is on, I have, um, three different departments. On forty-one twenty, there was an error. So it looks like I requested a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two. That's a hundred and something thousand dollar difference. So I, I.
I think we just pulled the data from Open Gov, but I'll go check. Uh, we, we've already made the adjustment in, in their finders.
Okay, because I wanna make clear that I didn't request that and I did send a, a notice that it was an error.
Big error.
I do have something, if y'all would accept a handout, that you can take to look at about impacts. So when we're talking about reducing, um, direct services to clients, you'll see there that it's, you know, if we made the ten percent cut, it would be how many food vouchers, how many utility bills, how many rents. Uh, we did a fifteen percent, a twenty percent. And it's real important to understand that that's just not a bill, that's somebody's household. So you're talking about evictions, uh, preventing evictions and disconnections and food insecurity. So we need to think about that in terms of people. You know, that's our citizens, um, who are living in poverty and need assistance. Also in court, a couple of weeks ago, um, there was a discussion about other services in the community. So I've provided you, there's a chart from two-one-one, it's their dashboard and it shows how many calls they receive. We're usually in the top three of the referral, I think on this one, we're second. This is from the beginning of the year until now. So you can see how many referrals are made to Nuasis County Social Services. And so what we did is we went through all of these twenty referrals and contacted those agencies yesterday to see what their funding was. So that's where you have this, it says, it says not for public distribution on, on your list. So it's showing that, um, a lot of them don't have funding. So the social services for Nuasis County has always been considered the safety net for the community. We've always been the stable one. We don't rely solely on donations or grants that may or may not come to help our citizens. And so that's, we've been around since the forties, fifties. Um, we've always had our office in Robstown, we've been around a long time. And so I just, we need to consider the people in the community who need our help. Can I answer any questions?
Yeah, I have some. How is the city of Corpus Christi so low? They've gotta have a much larger budget and the ability to have a much larger budget, cause, so how, how in the world do people not call the city of Corpus Christi seventy-six times and us seven hundred and ninety-four times? Because most of those people that you're serving, I would assume, are within the limits of, city limits of Corpus Christi.
Um, one of our highest, uh, zip codes is seven-eight-four-one-five that we provide service to. But the city of Corpus doesn't have a social services department. They, they do receive grants, but they sub-grant them out to other places, for example, Hope House.
To, Ho, Hotel, oh, all right, okay.
I had a day check to see how many other counties had a social services department and I think you talked to TAC.
That's correct, Judge. So what they tell me is like, um, it depends the needs of the county. So not that many counties have a social services department.
How many counties in Texas have a social services?
I'm, I'm getting that, that, but that's what that, it's just to look in, I had to look into each one because it's not required. That's, that's the answer that I got from Tac.
And what's the total budget for social services right now? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, because I should know that, but it's something like two million or somewhere around there.
And all your three, Digger.
Yeah, everything.
Oh, well, forty-one thirty is completely separate. That's the child services, so that's a different one.
Budget.
So, we have forty-one ten that goes hand in hand with forty-one twenty. I think I've put it on there.
When you say forty-one thirty is separate, though, that's still funded by what?
That's the Title IV reimbursement program.
Reimbursed by someone else?
I don't think it's totally reimbursed.
I totally know. So, what I want to know is what is the total expenditure that Nuasis County General Fund or Nuasis County Funds spend on social services?
So, six hundred and four thousand in the direct client services. That's towards burials, rent, mortgage.
They're stocking salaries, employees, everything, your whole budget.
Oh, and then, uh, the other one is one point three.
So, it's about two million dollars, is, yeah.
Right, so that's what I, okay, so that's not the, the one that's the, the grant or federally funded one? That, the Nuasis County Funds right now that are spent on social services?
Four administrative.
Okay, and then six hundred?
Five, uh, four. Six hundred and four on direct client services.
Okay.
Which we usually never spend all of that because we do use grants. We have several other grants, but that's what we're spending.
Right, but it's a one point nine, and I said too, I'm a little off, so I correct myself, one point nine point oh-four million dollars of general fund money that comes into social services from Nuasis County.
Yes.
Okay, so, again, I, I, here's, go ahead. I'll let you hear this before I throw my bad guy i- idea out, so go ahead.
Well, I'm just, when I look at the services, Rebecca, Ms. Rebecca, what do, if somebody comes in and they're mortgage or la- or for rent, or for light, how much, what the, what the extent do we keep them on? I mean, how much, how many months do they get for rent? How many months do they get for mortgage? How many months do they get for utilities?
So, from our general program, we would usually only assist one month. There's a possibility we could do up to twelve if they're pending a disability, for example. So, there's absolutely no income in the household, and they're pending a regular source of income. So, we want to keep them connected and prevent disconnection.
Do we, do we check on duplications, whether they're going to another funding source for that same thing?
And the only one we're required to do a duplication on is if we receive emergency food and shelter, which can go up to three months according to that grant. So, according to the grantor is what we, we pay.
I was gonna ask the same thing.
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just, I'm talking.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna ask the same thing, that if you get somebody asking for mortgage assistance or rental assistance, Veterans does the same thing. Do you refer them to them, or do you do it on?
We do that for them.
Oh, that's what you do for the veterans? Okay. Now, if there's an agency, which is the Nuasis County Community Agency, or the, the Driscoll, and they're providing the same services, how do we know that they're not going to both agencies to get the assistance that they need?
We don't. In, in all, I mean, not in all cases. So, we share with Catholic charities. We share data so that we don't duplicate services.
But Mission Nine-One-One and all the other people, all the other groups.
So, Mission Nine-One-One and, and we both receive TXU funding.
So, you have to make sure that.
We can see the clients bill through TXU, and they, so we know who's giving what on that one. They're all a little bit different based on the grantor.
So, you can't say, put them on the system and say, okay, I guess not because of.
No, that would require every social service agency in Nuasis County cooperating and having a system that works.
Okay. I just, I just, this is great, man. I, I mean, we should help people, but I just, I think people, you know, of course, like everywhere, any, any other thing, they're gonna find a loophole, and they're gonna go here, collect some money, and then go here, they're gonna collect. By the time you know it, they already collected three mortgages in one month, you know, so.
Well, I mean, we would probably know that because we're contacting the mortgage company.
Okay, so.
We, we contact vendors.
But if they don't, but if they don't go to the mortgage company to pay because they collected from another agency, how would they know? Say, for instance, I went to your office.
Right, and we only pay a vendor. We would never pay a client.
Individual.
No, I, and I don't know that some of these other places do that either. That's kind of a, we should not be doing that in any social service agency.
That, that's my question. How do we know that, you know?
And I was gonna say, kind of tying into that, I know that Claybuck County does a, what's that, low-income assistance program, and I think it's like electricity and water.
So, LIHEP?
Yes, that's how you say it, like.
We don't have that. Community Action has that. Only one in the county, it's Community Action.
So, Community Action for us. And that's actually through a state portal that you set up through utilityTexas.com or something like that. Forgot the website name. But, I mean, when you say utilities, it's, it's all the utilities. That's where you get your calls when you break down. I love this breakdown. I think you've done yourself a great service. You have people you represent.
So, that's not mine.
Oh, it's okay, but this is helpful.
Get that on their two-one-one dashboard.
But also all the other breakdowns that you've provided. This is the kind of substance we need to be able to look at this. Because, yes, not every department probably needs to cut a certain specific amount. I mean, there are cer- some exceptions. And y'all did yourself a service by you and JJ both coming in, and all the other department heads have been able to advocate and kind of show the connection that y'all have in supporting, and you're doing more with less, but that you're able to kind of cover for each other because right now, we have y'all housed together. So, I think that that goes to our future planning is keep y'all together because we know that your staff helps cover for JJ when he's not there and vice versa. And there's a lot of work you do in between. So, that's something to consider when we look at this budget.
And I would just like to say one more thing. So, my department is partially required, both of them are, yes.
Statutory, yes.
So, when we talk about burials and cremations, last year, we used all of our, that budget for burials and cremations. This year, not so much, thank goodness. So, you'll see the breakdown on there of what we've paid so far, how many cases. We, we work a lot more cases than we actually wind up paying for because we do locate the next of kin or find other resources for them. So, you'll see that on the paperwork as well, on the burials and cremations.
Does it take when someone contacts you to get them through or get them the help they need? I had someone ask me, said they, or screenshot, that it was four to six weeks or something.
That's what it is right now. I put it on here. We're scheduling, so as of yesterday, scheduling appointments for September twenty-second. We're two workers down on our vacancies, and it just slows us down.
So.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and this is, you know, this is the one that's definitely, you know, the arrows and slings will come, but we're in, we're in where we are. My question would be, quite frankly, why wouldn't we then just, and I'm anxious to see what they come back with on how many counties have social services? Because all these agencies, if we, if we provided funding to these agencies in a significant amount and didn't have a social services department, again, I, I know this is a, not a fun thing to talk about. Because if, if that's the trend around the state, and there's two-hundred-and-fifty-four counties and ten have social services department, then to not leave these people hanging with all of these kind of agencies they can handle, if we provided them funding and didn't have that department, because what you're telling me is we have six hundred and, we have one point three million in admin cost, which are employees, and we have six hundred and four thousand in direct client services. So, the direct client services are six oh-four, and the admins one point three. You know, my question would be, do we need a social services department? And why wouldn't we just take some of our funding and put it towards all these other agencies to continue to help these people? Because you're saying they don't have funding and, and have a significant reduction in that. And then try to get these people to go that we have to move onto other positions throughout the county that are in constitutional offices and so forth, because.
Good point, Commissioner, because anyone who is listening, any of our departments, if we are talking about cutting those departments, if in the future that comes back up, and that's the direction that we have to go, we certainly want all of these individuals to reach out into other departments that have available vacancies that need to be filled. And we would like to give them the time to do that by all means.
We're, I mean, we, we, we have, how many unfilled vacancies do we have?
Right now, two-hundred and one.
We have two-hundred and one unfilled vacancies, which we're not going to cut all of them, right? There's no way we can do that because people have to operate. So, there's going to be opportunities for people to move departments if we have to make a difficult decision. And so, I'm just throwing it out there, and it's maybe rhetorical because I'm sure you're going to say it's a terrible idea, which I would understand that you would. And I understand that, so it's, you can answer it, but it's more rhetorical to, more for thought processes. We want to help people, but at the same time, it's not a statutory department, other than parts of, and we'd have to keep some. You could, you could keep the parts that are statutory and make it veteran services slash social services. There's, it, it's, I, I get it's a tough thing, and I'm sorry, but I don't know how else to attack what we're trying to attack. And as the judge said, what we all want to make sure people understand is, is that there, we're not gonna, we, we can't, we're not going to get rid of all the vacancies. So, there's going to be vacancies in other departments that people can move to if they so choose to, and if they're hired by that department or that, or elected official or whatever. So, it's more rhetorical than anything, but you're certainly happy to answer it. But that's just one of the thought processes that I'm having during this horrible time.
Well, so Fort Bend County and Galveston and Lubbock County are two of the programs that I talked to. And then, you know, of course, your bigger cities, Travis County has a social service program. Bear has a social service program. Provide similar services to what we do. Um, I did want to go back to one thing Commissioner Modis says about LIHEP. So, when we look at that program and then you look at this list over here of Community Action, you'll see they're not taking applications right now because they have so many applications in, in their line. So, that's what our residents in the community are, are dealing with. The other thing is because of our grants, I wanted to go back and say that we don't exclude the city of Corpus Christi in our grants. So, our grants will usually say something like, um, urban and rural areas of Nuasis County. That's who we're gonna cover. So, my question, I guess, would be if we're discussing cutting the department, then are you, you're cutting all the grants and the assistance that's already out there for us? And that's a decision the court will have to make. Of course, I don't agree with it.
Wouldn't expect you to. Thank you very much.
And also, you have eighteen point two percent of your popul- population living in poverty, so I would hope that there's resources for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Ms. Lada?
Yes, we're gonna give you a few minutes that we all have to leave to go to the state of the city.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. I wanted to just review a little bit about our law library. And I did communicate with Adele and Lisa, and they did give me some figures of how much money we have been collecting from the district clerk funds. And in twenty nineteen or twenty, from twenty twenty, when we took over the law library, we have received over five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
Since twenty?
Twenty twenty, yes. That's when Commission, Judge Canales asked me to step up and take over the law library. And that's when we decided that we had a, uh, three, I think, at the time, they were only collecting one point five percent. And at the time, I spoke to Elva and Dale, and they told me they could collect up to three percent, which was the maximum for the district clerk fees. And we raised it up to the maximum. And so, that's why our fees have been going up. But, you know, we've had all these issues during the past couple of years. One was COVID, so they didn't collect as much money as we could have. But we have been collecting. And so, Dale said that between, every year, we get approximately between one-thirty to one-forty-five. And that has increased. And currently, the budget for the law library is approximately a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy thousand. And I did recommend for us to remove our Westlaw Internet Services, which is approximately forty thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven, which will reduce my sal- reduce the, my budget about, to about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And if we collect at least a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five, thirty thousand, you know, we won't be that short that the general fund will have to, you know, offset the remainder. But it, it was more than twenty percent for the law library. And I did have some figures, and we are running out of time, so we won't have to go over them. But I did send them to Peyton, and I did send them to Ida, and so, you know, you'll have access to them. And, but I do have my staff that has been working very diligently since, you know, we did the renovations. And they are seeing attorneys and judges and, and a lot of people that are sent from the district clerk, county clerks, that need help to do pro se. And so, I know they are keeping very busy, and we do have stats, and we will proceed and pass them out. So, you'll know that they are being, you know, they stay busy every day. And any questions regarding the law library? And I can move on to the Department sixty-three-ten.
I just, I want to commend you on our issue with trying to find space and how you met with us and you were very willing to work it out with the Public Defender's Office and stuff, so.
I appreciate it.
I do want to give you that credit before we move on. Thank you.
And for Department sixty-three-ten, that oversees my library, the Kishami Library and the Bishop branch, so they follow both. And I did have to make some very drastic changes that were very heartfelt because I had asked for additional funding this fiscal year when we were first asked. Uh, I did need extra funding for security guards, and that was wiped off. And in order for me to meet the twenty percent threshold, the fifteen to twenty, I did have to remove the majority of my security ops, which was twenty thousand out of the twenty-three thousand six hundred and sixty, because I did not want to cut my staff. I mean, this is my sixteenth year with the county, and it has been the hardest, you know, time for me to be able to acquire all the staff that I currently have to meet the needs for both libraries, which is the Bishop and the Kishami Library. And that's, that's the, the best thing I could do was, you know, to remove some of my salary for, for the security ops and the majority of my funding for books, you know, that's what I had to do. And the other items to equal a hundred and twenty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-three out of my seven-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollar budget. So, I think it was about sixteen, seventeen percent. So, you know, we do what we have to do.
How many staff do you have at the law library?
Two, sir.
Yeah.
Do you purchase books still there? That was one of, sorry to interrupt, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
You do, because I know when we moved some of that stuff out, we didn't have anyone that wanted to take a lot of those books on. Are we still purchasing, or is that antiquated now?
No, no, well, because we had the Westlaw, which is what we're removing, that, you know, that's what's online with it. If people, and there, there's a lot of people that don't want to do it online, and that's the easiest because it's current. And that's what I had to remove because that's the one that.
Spend on books versus Westlaw?
Exactly. And so, for books, I ended up keeping just the basic, which was forty-two thousand. I, I, well, hold on, that's my budget. For the law library.
I, we, just a thought, did we move somebody from the law library to Bishop, you know? Because we were always short in Bishop.
Yes.
Find volunteers. And gives you one staff left over there. You, that's, can that staff be placed at the library there in Robstown?
If you're willing to make the change and keep the one library that I have at the law library and move one over to the Bishop, that would be fine.
Well, we might, we might want to close the law library.
Well, I don't want to see that as an option, but it's the will of the court. I mean, but currently, you know.
These are difficult times and difficult decisions for all of us.
I'm just thinking of different options, right?
Well, and what Dale did tell me, Commissioner, before you say anything else, if we shut down the law library, we will not be able to receive the funds from the district clerk.
How much funds is that?
We, we will not be able to receive any of the revenue.
The, the fee is restricted only for that issue.
And how much is that?
Five hundred and sixty-three thousand the past four years.
From the district clerk?
Thousand a year.
Total, five hundred and sixty-three thousand.
No, no, not a year.
No, the past.
About a hundred and forty thousand a year.
Yeah.
But those have been coming in forever. That's not because of, yeah, those fees have been coming in. Those aren't anything new that, no offense that I has done. But if we eliminate the law library, we have to eliminate the fee.
Yes.
I'm just trying, you use the law library, the card, somebody can use the card to go in, do, read what they gotta read, you know, or just, I'm, I'm just saying, there's got to be some options. And I know that to me, of course, it's me, right? Bishop is more important than, than the law library, you know, because Bishop, uh, it, it serves a, a community.
Yes, sir.
You know, and, and we're always struggling. And I pay for the person in Bishop sometimes, you know, and sometimes I don't, but some, a lot of times I do. You know, and, and we had that library remodel and everything else. So, I went by there about a week ago, a week and a half ago. It looked good. They had kids there, some parents there.
They've been busy.
And, and I, you know, I just think we need to have somebody there more than what we have now. I know it's two days a week or whatever it is.
No, four.
With the four, but only certain hours, right?
Morning and afternoon.
Yeah, certain hours, uh, three hours in the morning or whatever, or three hours in the afternoon, whatever.
Well, the, the law library also serves the people that do not have the capability to have an attorney, and my staff helps them, does pro se, and they print out documents for them, and the attorneys and the judges. So, I mean, I know we have a need also for the law library, sir, so it just depends whatever the court wants to do.
Mostly attorneys that use it, but, you know, but anyway, I've just, I'm just, we're just, right now, again, we're just throwing stuff around. We don't know where it's going to land, right? I mean, we're just, but I just want to see one of those persons at the, at the Bishop Library, really. You know, so we can, so we won't have to struggle at the Bishop Library and open it up like, you know. Anyway, this is something I'm going to probably give with you later, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for sixty-three-ten?
I think you're good.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much. I know it's eleven-ten, and some of us have to get across to.